Hello. Hello. It's a little after three. We'll wait about two minutes just to give the people who are at the bar a chance to get in. Well, good afternoon. It's April. Not quite April Fool's Day. We already missed that. It's spring break time, so we have several of our leaders, our team leader directors on vacation this week. I was lucky enough to be on vacation last week and then back this week to meet and greet everybody, too. It's kind of a sparse crowd. Is all your neighbors on spring break, too? Are having a good time enjoying the beautiful weather? I'm sure. Okay, we have some directors here today. I'll give you some updates on their different departments. And then I have some stuff to talk about after that as well, so. Anybody want to go first? Emily. Emily's going to go first, give us an update on marketing.
Hi, everybody. I wish I was taller right now. Hi, I'm Emily Adler. I am a sales associate here at Cedarfield. I'm a mighty team of two as of right now, so it's me and Shay Powell in the marketing office. If you haven't met Shay, she is absolutely lovely and a beast on the phones. This woman, I don't know how she does it, but she is able to contact a million people in one day, I counted. So please, if you ever want to come by our office and get any information about the community from a marketing standpoint, my door is usually open. If it's closed, it's probably because I'm on a meeting. But I just wanted to give you a quick update. It's very similar to what you've heard in the past. We're at 96% occupancy. We currently still have some one bedrooms that we're trying to find the right people for. And ultimately, the referrals that we get from you all have been absolutely so important. And so we thank you for continuing to be the face of Cedarfield outside of our department. But I always say to people on tours, I like to say that we have three of the best assets here at Cedarfield, which is our food, our flowers, and our fabulous residents. Did you like that? That's three F's. Anyways, but anyways, please, please feel free to come and say hello to me if I haven't met you yet. And that is all I have to say. Thank you.
You went in and nervous. You did very, very well. Thank you. You mentioned that the crowd out here is your best resource. Because of that, how are tours going? Are you seeing an increase in tours, a decrease in tours, or what is that?
So we're having, there is a lot of interest in Cedarfield, as I'm sure you're all aware. We have a waitlist of over 400 people who are waiting to get into Cedarfield. So our tours are still going very well. I know Phyllis Katz came to my office today to give some of her perspective on what things that she wants to be shared on those tours, and I'm certainly open to hearing that. But yeah, the interest is still strong, so we're just trying to get through the waitlist to find the folks who are ready to move, which is the big obstacle.
Who's our biggest competition in town that you see?
That's a toughie. It is. There's, it's for different reasons. Currently, I would say that as of right now, I would say that our biggest competition is Avery Point. That comes as no surprise. They, and in my opinion, I think the reason that that is our biggest competition is because we do have a waitlist. So Avery Point is able to move people in and to guarantee that they have that move-in date for June 2023 or January 2024. We have a waitlist full of people who are waiting to move into Cedarfield. And so I think that is a big part of the competition, aside from the fact that it's shiny and new and we're 26 years strong. Other than that, I think it's just, you know, the other communities are growing in size, but we offer that intimate community feeling of being 526 residents. So to me, I don't think that there is much competition. I love this community so much. And I really think that we are still far ahead of the game.
When I talked to Emily this morning about doing this, she gave me that deer-in-the-headlights stare like, are you sure? She did an amazing job, so thanks. Some of you may be wondering why Emily was here and not our previous marketing director. And as you all are aware, it's a personnel decision that I can't really get into details on. But suffice it to know that anytime a decision at this level of employee is made, it's nothing made hastily. It's something that we think a lot about and we really investigate to make sure what we're doing is in the best interest of everybody involved. And after reviewing the information, we made a decision that's in the best interest of all who's involved. That's all I can say about it at this point in time, but please, please be aware that as we move forward, we will look for another excellent candidate to fill that role and move forward with our marketing initiatives going forward. Dave Stewart. Or you definitely want to go. Who wants to go next? We'll do this. One lady, one gentleman, one lady, one gentleman. Okay, cool. Hello, everybody. I'm David Stewart here, representing dining. And so often people want to know what's going on with, you know, our team. That sounds like a broken record, but nonetheless, we'll go down that road. We're doing very, very well on recruitment and staffing. But it's just, it's a different world now. If you've heard me speak before, you'll realize I've said this before, that one of our previous leaders said, I think we'll always be living with COVID and we'll always be living with turnover. People do not seem to take jobs nowadays and plan on staying there for many, many years. So with the service team, we've always had the college kids coming and going. But unlike years past, we've probably got the greatest group of people that we've almost ever had. But we're always looking for one or two people on the service team. The kitchen staff, the individuals you don't see too often behind the wall, they're a very stable group. Most of them have been here over 15 years. The cook-to-order team, the people who make your order when you come in and sit down and it's cooked for you in that moment, the ala menu team. They're a team that's always going to come and go. We got one fellow turned in his notice today because he got offered an insane wage to go cook down in Chateau Latimer. Restaurant tours are doing that. They have to do that. They can't keep their doors open without staff. So if you haven't heard me tell this story, I'll tell you that there was a restaurant over here that had an ad on the radio that said, bring us your pay stub and we'll beat it by $2 an hour. I mean, holy cow. It doesn't matter what you make. I'll beat it by $2 an hour. Unfortunately, we don't do that. We need to remain consistent. And so we have, I think, maybe three or four openings out of 90 people. So we're doing very, very well. We're at a point where we can begin to do some training. Yay! I mean, we just, we're struggling to get through COVID with enough human beings coming to work every day. We are now at the point where we can begin to do some individualistic training, and we think that that is wonderful. I had a big training class for the service team yesterday. The culinary team in the kitchen has been doing monthly training as well. So we're very happy with the staffing situation. One other thing I wanted to mention was I ran into a wonderful new couple who had only been here six weeks. And they were gushing about the food and, oh my gosh, it's just so good. I can't imagine. So with regard to, oh, she left. Snap. With regard to competition, people move to Westminster if they have friends at Westminster, but if they're independent thinkers, they come to Cedarfield. I'm serious. That's my belief. I really do. Karf said it. We are unparalleled in what we do here. So anyway. So we have a very unique system. We were the first in the country to do restaurants in a retirement community. And I also would give you the visual of think of your favorite restaurant in the world. Visualize their menu. When's the last time they changed it? They do daily specials. They don't change their menu very often. We change ours every week. So it does lead us into some challenges sometimes, the products not showing up or the pork cooks. You know, we train them to do one thing and next week we need to train them to do something else. So if you ever experience any challenges, you think something isn't prepared the way you like, please grab Jim or Steve in the dining room. But if you don't want to do that, and I admit I don't always do that when I'm in a restaurant, at least let us know. I think if you email me, you'll find I'm extremely responsive. So everybody here in the Pinnacle Living Group is just first initial, last name at pinnacleliving.org. So I told that couple this morning, I'm D. Stewart, no periods, nothing, just D. Stewart at Pinnacle Living. And if you want to say, oh, my gosh, I had the best whatever last night, or hey, my steak was a little overcooked, that's okay. The other thing I want to tell you is that every night, the whole leadership team for that evening gets together, compares notes, and then there's a nightly report that's typed up. So hey, we had a pretty busy night. Here's what was popular. Mr. Smith fell and we had to pull the pull cord. Betty didn't come to work. Everybody liked the catfish. Nobody liked the scallops. Whatever. We do a complete nightly report. So if you mention anything to any manager, we're all going to read it the next morning. So we compare notes and we share. Chef Tyrone reads about the food. Jim and Steve and the other service leaders read about any service issues we may have had. So please, if you have any feedback whatsoever, just let us know. Also, I like to give this laughing example. It's been many years now, but there used to be a resident who would walk by my office and yell, chicken lovers! That's all she'd say, and she'd keep right on going. And that meant she wanted to split chicken lovers on the menu. So if you have anything that you haven't seen in a while you'd like to see, anything you had in the restaurant that was spectacular, let us know. We'll be happy to do it. We're easily bribed. Thank you. Last but not least, we're finally going to get a new point-of-sale computer system. Ours is way past dead. Most of the tablets don't work anymore. The team is writing orders down and then going behind the wall to the terminal and entering the order. And often leads to some errors, but regardless. Our sister community Windsor Meet in Williamsburg, I love the director there. I hired him and he's just been wonderful for that community. He had identified the reservation software system that we're using. He also identified the point-of-sale computer system that we're going to get. It's going to be a huge upgrade. You know, things do get better each year. But one of the things I want to start putting out in front of you, so you get ready for it, and if you don't like it, yell at Jim. Why not? Is that the current system uses the fobs. Everybody's got one. No, actually, everybody's got about three or four. And so when you lose one, they give you a new one. They don't tell us they gave you a new one. So now you're not in our system. So we're going to be getting, you know, little tags that you get at the grocery store. We're going to have those. You have to bring it. It's not going to open a door. It doesn't interact with the other system. We're going to manage it. If you lose one, we'll give you a new one, but we'll make sure we take the old one out of the system. But you got to bring it. Otherwise, we can't check you in accurately. Right now, we have more billionaires than we want to have because which Smith are you? Which Jones are you? And so we're really struggling to get people keyed in properly and so that things get billed properly. So we're going to get this new system. You're going to get one of those little things. I'll apologize now, but you're going to have to bring it. Would my father used to say when I was a kid, no tiki, no washi. So we're going to need it to check you in. The hostesses will take you to your table and they'll put Stephanie at seat one and they'll put Jeff at seat two. And then when the food comes out, it gets to the right person. When you get a bourbon on the rocks, you get billed for it and he doesn't. Yeah. So anyway, that's good news. It'll be about two, three months away before we get that. So we'll give you lots of reminders. Ms. Philman? It doesn't take fobs. I don't want to fix it, so it doesn't. I can't tell you what a problem we're having with service and billionaires. And so we get the servers doing what we called in culinary school, auctioning the food. Okay, who had the grouper? So for the dining team to work properly, we really have got to straighten this out. Now, could this system ever be made so it opened doors? Eh, no, probably not. It's a visual system like those things you get from CVS and Kroger and things, so yeah.
Would you explain why the cooks are cooking in the kitchen rather than instead of in front of us?
Yes. Why are the cooks cooking in the kitchen instead of in front of us? Because when we reintroduced Prima, we didn't want to try to have to open the second kitchen from staffing purposes. The last thing we ever wanted to do in a million years was to open Prima and then close it again. So we made the decision to move the entire team to the back so that the main, the Grill Pub menu and Prima menu could come off that one big line. It's a very large, robust, capable line. And so we can produce all of the food off of that line as opposed to what we did when we built Prima, was we had the Grill Pub kitchen out front and the Prima kitchen in the back and we had two different cook teams. And so we decided to do it this way so we could open Prima and keep it open. So I don't know if that's forever, but it certainly is working wonderfully right now. People are going to come and go. They just are. So we thought this was, and we did this with the Dining Services Committee. What a great committee it is. They're very, very much our advisors. And so we thought this was worth trying, but hey, you know, we'll see how it goes. Catering. Thank you. Okay. I got you. So we are headed out of COVID a little bit and into better weather. And so we're doing more events in dining. We're also being asked to do more events. So please realize that when you have something come up that you would like us to participate in, it may be, well, it will be subject to availability. We had a party come up the other day. We already had three events on that day. And so we have to be careful of whether we can handle events. So if you're thinking about doing something, let us know in advance. And once we ink it down, Steve hits it down, Steve handles all this, he'll communicate with Jim for the staffing of the service staff. He'll communicate it with the chef, and we make sure that we do a good job for you. But recognize, I mean, there are days when we've got three and four and five events already happening in one day. So communicate with Steve when you're thinking about doing something. Yes, Mr. Smith?
Dave, several years ago, well, first of all, like for example, filet mignon. You don't have them now because you think the cost is too high or you can't get them. I suspect it's more the cost. It, I don't know, maybe four, five years ago, I know we went through something and they were, you had a subcharge. You wanted to order this item, you paid a little extra. If somebody wants a good filet mignon, they go out and try to buy one, they're into a shop and people pay it. But just is it possible that occasionally something like that, or lobster or something very special, that you could have and make it enough charge is what I'm trying to say.
Sure. So the question is that some of the things, most popular, of course, is the tenderloin. We've had two issues, price and availability. So we used to, for many, many, many years, we bought a really spectacular tenderloin and our vendor kind of held the price fairly steady for us. They do that for a few things, a few items we buy and it's very helpful budget-wise that they stay fairly steady. That item, because of supply chain, began to come and go. We weren't able to get it. So, well, don't they have other tenderloins? Yes, they do. That one was $20 a pound, which is a magnificent price for an animal that was raised for steaks. You're going to get me into beef 101 here if you're not careful, and I know we got a meeting to get through. But the next item up was $50 a pound and it's, you know, what Buckett buys. So we don't have that kind of money in our budget, so we buy it when we can. It's becoming more available again, that $20 tenderloin. And so we're going to buy it and offer it fairly often. The question you ask is a good one, and I'll take it up with the dining committee of would we ever want to have a surcharge on the menu for, so we could have lobster on a regular basis? I mean, lobster is incredibly, incredibly expensive. It's just gone off the charts, and I don't know why, but I do look at it each Monday when I get the list to see how much they're running. And there's just a few things that have gotten real crazy. So that's a really good question, and thank you for reminding me of it. I'll take it up with the dining committee and see if it would, you know, if it'd fly around here, so.
Can you put French onion soup back on?
French onion soup. Would you send me a comment card or an email? Because I'll forget from here to there. Never mind. I'll write it down.
Several years ago, before COVID, we all have to say BC before COVID. Monthly in the summertime, there was barbecue or a special event at the clubhouse.
Uh huh, clubhouse cookouts.
Yes. Will you ever start that again?
I think, okay, so the question is, BC, before COVID, we had clubhouse cookouts. They went on for 20-plus years, and they were popular. And so will we ever do them again? I think we will. I think we will. Once we can get our feet under us staffing-wise and be assured that we would have the staff, it takes... We need to have a cook available for the day and a couple of servers to set it up and break it down. But I think the answer to that question is an absolutely yes. I wouldn't say to you, we have them this year. I think we can, and we're certainly going to try for it. So absolutely, clubhouse cookouts. I'm going to write that down, too. Yes, sir?
It was a beautiful facility we have here. Is there an opportunity to have dining out on the veranda?
Question is, is there an opportunity to have dining out on the veranda? I think the answer is yes. We began to look at it. And again, I could probably look at my search history on the computer and we began to look at options for that, BC. And all of these things are good reminders of things we used to do or things we were thinking about trying. And they just totally fell off our mindset, so I'll write that one down as well. I think it could be fun. And we have done a few things out here and we use staff dining as our staging place. So we kind of have a little bit of something to work with. So yeah, I'll make, I'll make these notes. Okay, I don't want to hog the whole meeting, so I'll be here afterwards. And a big question is for me?
Thanks, Dave. It's very evident food is popular, which is good. I find the same thing myself, my wife. I eat here frequently. So we are pleased with the food. Stephanie was helping in our Human Resources area today.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Stephanie Moncky. I'm the Human Resources Director here at Cedarfield. We've been very busy the last few months of hiring team members, so I can honestly say staffing is much improved. We currently, during the month of March through April 5th today, we've hired 20 new team members. Of those 20, nine of them are CNAs, three full-time CNAs, and then six part-time CNAs. Three LPNs, two full-time LPNs, and then one part-time LPN. We've hired one clinical leader, two full-time housekeepers, two full-time household cooks, one full-time administrative assistant for health services, and then one full-time driver. And of course, we've hired one part-time server. The openings we currently have at Cedarfield, we have 10 full-time openings, which is for the entire community. And then we have six part-time, or eight part-time openings. And that's pretty much all I have. Anyone have any questions for me?
I think Stephanie mentioned earlier, too, our turnover is right around 5% for the last month. Which might sound a little bit high, but in my past experience, a lot of communities average anywhere from 15% to 20% turnover. Sometimes up to 50% turnover in certain categories.
Are we still agency-free in the health services area?
Are we still agency-free? Yes, we are. Yes, we are. I think we're going on five weeks now? Five weeks of agency-free, which is a huge savings from that perspective.
What do you think by agency-free?
What do you mean, agency-free? Okay. When we have openings, particularly in our healthcare area, in our nursing, in our CNA area, we have to make sure we maintain staffing levels. And to do that, we sometimes have to bring in people who work for agencies, like hiring agencies, staffing agencies. And they typically cost us, what, roughly twice the hourly rate that we pay? So it gets very expensive. So to be agency-free for even a shift a day saves us a lot of money. So being agency-free for over a month now has just been tremendous savings on our budget going forward.
And the care is better? Care is better?
Yes, care is better, too. We have, you know, consistent staff. When you hire agency staff, you most of the time don't get a certain person coming every day. It could be different people every day, so you lose that continuity of care for the residents. Thanks. Good point. Okay. David Taylor. He's got the money. He's got the money.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm David Taylor from the business office. Speaking of money, monthly fees that are electronically drawn this month will be taken out on the 10th. It's normally around the 7th. There's bank holiday on Friday, so we're going to take them out on the 10th. If anyone is interested in signing up for that, you don't want to write checks anymore, stop by the business office and we can sign you up for that. Second order of business is the gift shop. I would like to thank all of the volunteers, all of the resident volunteers, all of the team members who got volunteered for the gift shop. We are accepting volunteers. There is a signup sheet in the gift shop. If you would like to volunteer, you can do as little or as much as you want. We will work that out with your abilities and your schedule. Stop by the gift shop, sign up. In order to keep it going on a regular basis and to make sure that we have coverage, we believe we need about 40 volunteers overall, which is a lot of people. But that assures that we have coverage every day. Shifts are short. People can work for their abilities as much or as little as they want. And it's a great, it's a great opportunity to be with other residents and to meet our team members and maybe learn a new skill or use some of the skills you already have. We can, we can use all of this. The gift shop is open from 10 to 3 daily, Monday through Friday, and we would love to see you down there.
And it's fun?
And it is fun. The goal of the gift shop, you know, I get, you're the money man. We should make money. Yes. Yes, we should maybe make, the goal of the gift shop is to serve the community. We want to do that. We want to at least break even. A lot of what we're buying currently is at full retail, so we turn around and sell it at full retail. Some of our smaller items have a little bit of a markup, you know, people will pay $1.50 for a candy bar, but they will not pay $10 for milk. And we understand that. So we want to keep everything down there affordable, available and add items that everyone wants or that you feel that you need. So we're, we're looking for volunteers that can help us with that. Having residents in the shop, you know what you need and that helps us on our buying. So if you'd like to come down to the gift shop and volunteer, please do. We'd love to have you. Any questions? Any volunteers? Thank you.
Just following up on the gift shop real quick. It was a momentous effort by a lot of people to do this and I would like to recognize folks, we had a steering committee that came together. So if you're in the room and part of the steering committee, would you stand up please? I know Denise is part of it. Alice. Two or three other folks that are part of that group and they have just been working probably 36, 40 hours a day trying to get this thing up and running. The good thing is we have a couple ladies of that group who have purchasing experience in their background and so they are actually working with David and setting up accounts to get wholesale prices on some items. So we'll start to see a expansion of the items in that area, in the gift shop and the convenience store, that will be priced comparable to what you would pay out in Richmond, in each store in Richmond. Some of it is the straws, what are those little straws called?
Cheese straws.
Cheese straws.
Cheese straws.
Creamed pieces.
They look like cookies to me, but they're, they're called cheese straws. Anyways, we can, we offer those at basically the same price you get them in the community. All right, Denise?
Maybe a little less.
Maybe a little less. Whoa. Okay, so get your deal downstairs now. But I think that's going to be a great opportunity and as David says, we need more volunteers. Committee needs more volunteers. The goal is to have enough volunteers so it's not a job. So you work, you volunteer maybe two or three hours every other week and you really get to have fun, enjoy it, get to know people. I walked through there the other day and a couple ladies were sitting there watching as people came in and I said, you're getting to get reacquainted with people. And they said, no, we're meeting people we never knew lived here. So it's a great opportunity to expand your, your network as well. So keep that in mind as you look at doing it. Lacey's not here, but he gave me some information to share with you. Number one, there have been no recent beaver sightings in the pond. He said there was a beaver sighting out on Three Chop Road, which was not going to make it back to the pond, which was a good thing. He's finalizing an emergency preparedness manual that we have to have in place actually for our benefit, but also for our Medicare certification coming up. So he'll be leading some safety training over the next few months and he may have received the, he did receive the schedule coming up. On April 20th, we're going to talk about active shooting, shooter training. On May 16th, the evacuation training. June 6th, fire safety. July 11th, tornado readiness. And August 8th, emergency preparedness. So they all kind of go together. If you're being shy today, you better evacuate and if the fire is there, you better run as well. Good things to know as you go forward. Signs, 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 you know, he's still working with the vendor to get the signs in-house and get those up and around the community. D wing generator, going through the permit application review with the county. As soon as that permit is approved, we'll move forward with the installation and associate electric will work on that. So even though it's not happening right now, please be aware that with the county, things take time. So he has to go through that process. We can't put it out there until we get that process complete. We're working on that to do that as well. Florence is out, Allison is out and Tamika is doing her thing over there as well in the healthcare area. Some things I have for update. We worked with the Pinnacle Living corporate staff as well as Emergency Richmond and applied to be the top workplace in the metro area again. We have received that award for the sixth year in a row, so that will be announced in May. I met with the renovation committee yesterday for the town center area, for the lobby and library and those areas as well. We have about seven or eight people on that committee, a great cross-section of the community, good backgrounds, good knowledge of what should be done. And they're all were charged with the idea of what do we, what can we do to improve the appearance and the usability of those areas from a perspective of not just what I like, but what's good for the community. So we had a lot of good discussion. It was just kind of fun to sit back and watch as certain people, we all have our own opinions of what we think is good, you know, what I like, they don't like, what she likes, I don't like. And so those opinions were expressed, but what I was really pleased to see is we came to a good consensus on what we all felt was good for the community. Maybe not what I wanted, but good for the community going forward. Keeping in mind that whatever we do out there has to be in place for the next generation coming in, not just us, but the next folks moving in for the next five, 10, 15 years to do that. So it's a real challenge to look at what's available and Cornerstone, I think, did a great job of presenting a couple options to us. And we looked at them and then mixed and matched and gave them ideas. They're going to come back on April 20th, right around there anyways, with their final thoughts on what they heard yesterday and with a final plan, which we can still tweak a little bit too, but if long as we're in approval then, we'll hand it off to Lacey and to the construction team and it'll begin that process of renovating that area. That will be the lobby, the chapel, the interfaith room across the hall here, the library and the front area by where the fireplace is down there as well. So I think the ideas we heard yesterday are pretty exciting, pretty fun looking forward to the future, taking that going forward as well. Fellowship Hall renovation, that'll be next on the list. We met with the group about a month ago now, gave them some ideas. They are reworking that whole plan to do that as well. A big chunk of the renovation in this room is going to be the ability to broadcast to people in their apartments as well as record for later preview, upgrade the equipment that does this. You can see right now, I am glued to this podium. My feet want to walk back and forth. The camera can't follow me going back and forth. We're looking at upgrading all that equipment to do that. Also upgrading the ability to hear in this room better for those folks who have hearing aids. We'll put a loop system in the floor, which will be able to tie into hearing aids to do that. All that costs money and you heard me talk about this in other meetings. We're looking at ways to give you an opportunity to help us raise that money. I can stand here today and tell you, I think I have about $10,000 already committed to help us towards that goal. Now that's about one-tenth of what I, that's enough, less than that. I need about $350,000 total to do it. So we're a long ways away from the goal, but the more we can help, the better. You'll hear more about that coming up in the near future when Allison gets back from vacation. Her and I are going to sit down together and actually put together a capital campaign that will get information out to you and have, give you the opportunity to, to make a donation, should you choose to, should you like to. We talked about the convenience store. We have zero agency, we talked about that. We also did receive the final accreditation from CARF. All the work we went through past six, seven, eight, nine months was finally came to fruition. We got the accreditation. On April 12th, we're going to be celebrating with the staff for the agency, zero UCs as well as the CARF accreditation. So you will see out in the courtyard, a couple food trucks out there, open some music and you'll see staff out there having a good time celebrating their achievement of what they helped us do to do that. So that'll be next week. So if you see us out there, wave at us, you know, give everybody a good time doing that. Executive Director update. I just talked to Dan this morning. They've had some recent interviews with some potential executive director candidates. What I don't know her, but I know the company she works for. Are you going to exercise? She works for a company called Lead Care Services, which is who I used to work for before I came to Florida seven years ago. So I do know if she is one of the people in the mix, she will come with a good background of training and education and skill level. The other folks that are in the mix, I do not know, but I do know some of their backgrounds and they also have good background as well. So I'm optimistic that in the near future, they'll be able to narrow this down and bring a final candidate to, to the group for discussion. So things are moving slowly, but they're still moving along. With that, Patty and I hear a lot of conversation about when are we leaving? Right now, we're looking at right around the end of April to be on our way to Florida for a while and Michigan for the summertime. With that said, I also talked to Dan and worked in some loose negotiations on what I could do to continue to help going forward, whether it's, you know, a couple of days here, a couple of days there, but I, you know, be willing to help out whatever I can to go forward to, to do that. So that's what I know about executive director update and that's where we are. Questions? Comments? Thoughts? Yes, sir?
On the certification, is that Medicare certification you're speaking of? What will that do for us as residents?
The question is about Medicare certification over in the healthcare area. What will that do for the organization? It will open up 20 beds that we have over there for those individuals who go to the hospital and need to come back for some type of therapy. Right now, if you do that and you come back here, it's all private pay. If we're certified for Medicare, then Medicare will pay for that services. It opens up the opportunity to enhance our revenue, not just for residents who live here, but let's say we have 20 beds there and we are full, we have maybe two or three open beds there, we could also bring in somebody from the outside for a 16 to 20 day. The interesting thing with Medicare, people go, oh, if you fill up those beds with all Medicare, what happens if I need a bed? An average length of stay for a Medicare person is 16 to 20 days. So if we have 20 beds, if they're all filled with Medicare participants and you need a bed, I can guarantee you within one, maybe two days, there will be a bed available for you. So don't panic just because we have more people taking advantage of Medicare. It'll increase our revenue. If you think of revenue from a perspective of a cost per day, living in a healthcare area, I don't know what the current numbers are, but I could tell you from my past experience, we were averaging between $550 and $650 a day in revenue for a Medicare bed. So it really does enhance our revenue perspective going forward. Good question. Other questions? Another one?
Since I could only get another one, since the cutouts will be open, what are the plans to repair the area around the pond so that you could have, you know, better walking trail, maybe even put some fish in the pond? Is the fun to get out there and cast a wolf?
Question is, with the weather getting nice and the clubhouse being reopened for events, are there plans to improve the area around the pond and possibly stock the pond with fish? I know there are plans to stock the pond with fish, I'm not sure. I'll have to ask Lacey what the plans are as far as around the pond, but I could see down the road, we would have to enhance that to make it reachable for, for you folks. Are you a fly fisherman or a baitcaster?
Both.
Both, okay. Do you want trout? Do you want bluegill? What do you want?
No, I want trout. You want to put a basket in?
A little musky? Okay. You want with a big musky? Oh my gosh, you take up the whole pond? Great. Yes, in the back.
If you happen to have two individuals that are, I mean, an individual and Medicare beds are all full, whether that person is from the inside or the outside and somebody who's under life care, will they bump somebody in their preferred choice?
On a Medicare bed?
Yes.
On a Medicare room? If we have the option of somebody who is a resident here versus somebody who's an outside person?
No. If, if the person that needs to get a bed is life care.
Okay.
And the person that's occupying only a bed is preferred choice, do we bump them as a life care?
No. But I, what I can say is the chances of that happening would be slim and none because we also, even though we're going to have 20 beds, they're going to be certified for Medicare, our goal is to keep one or two of those beds open for the internal person who needs a bed.
But if someone had to be transferred, there has been a case here where you sent someone from your light work. Why would you not send the other person that not like life care resident have to go to a level of responsibility?
Well, preferred choice is still one of our residents here, I think.
Yeah, I think you do.
It's an outside person. The outside person, but we wouldn't bring anybody in from the outside if we were that full. We wouldn't only bring in outside people if we were, you know, we had openings, several openings in the Medicare area.
Could you tell me where in the budget plans replacing the elevators are, especially the one at the atrium?
I'm sorry, I can't hear. It's a question.
The elevator in the atrium seems to continue to break down. Where in the scope of the budget is that replacement planned?
The question is about the elevator in the atrium, which has broken down several times. Where is it in the budget process to be replaced? I don't know. I'll ask Lacey.
I think we need to find that out and if not, push it up because it's actually only one that's big enough for people to bring in furniture, so for a couple floors.
I know recently it was down because the motor totally burned up and they replaced the motor, so it should be in pretty good shape, but I did write it today and it made a funny noise, so. And I don't want people to get stuck in that elevator. I know some folks who don't like to be in closed quarters, but I'll ask Lacey where we are. Other questions? Well, that's pretty good. Okay. Other thoughts? Good information? Anne?
Can I say what a pleasure it has been working with you this year? Thank you for all you've done for us.
Thanks for the kind words. I appreciate it. And I couldn't do it without the help of the little lady sitting back there with me, so she deserves it. You know, people ask why I do this. I retired almost three years ago now, but when I found what I liked to do back in 1998 and you get into something that you do and, you know, you always say, once you find your passion, you never work another day again in your life. I don't feel as this is work. You know, it's me, it's enjoyable to come and be able to share my experience and my thoughts with the leadership team as well as the residents. And if I can leave in the end of April, when I relieve and feel that I made a little bit of difference, I'm good with that. So thanks, I appreciate that. Okay, wants to buy me a drink now? Good, okay. I'm just gonna throw something out real quick too about Law &amp; Land. Patty and I have had an excellent and very enjoyable time to have dinner with a lot of you folks. So much so that we look at our calendar sometimes and go, we're booked Monday through Friday. So the rest of the time that we're here, we're not going to do that. We're going to limit our bookings, but we're still going to eat in the dining room and, you know, probably more often than go out. And we tend to eat at the harvest table. We're trying to get people to use the harvest table. It's a great opportunity to sit and chit chat with four, five, six other folks. So if you see us in there, feel free to join us at the table without an invitation. You know, we'll be there and do that. So it's just, it's just been great for us to get to know you folks and really enjoy what you have here. This is a great community, a great service. You heard David talk about what we heard from the CARF folks about the dining area. We heard similar comments about healthcare. We heard similar comments about the wellness center. We've heard a lot of these great comments about this community. So it's a great place, you know, and you always have complaints, but those are minimal compared to what I've heard in other communities. So it's just a great opportunity for us to enjoy and I hope you enjoy your life here as well. Thanks.